Good morning.
The December ninth, 2021 meeting of the Alabama State Board of Education will now come to order. The invocation will be given by Pastor Agnes Lover, pastor of St. Paul African Methodist Episcopal Church located here in Montgomery. She will now offer the invocation. Pastor Lover.
Shall we bow? Shall we pray? Almighty God, we approach the throne of grace, petitioning you on behalf of the Alabama State Board of Education and the men and women who sacrifice daily for the benefit of Alabama children. We ask you to bless the teachers, support staff, and administrators abundantly, and continue to bestow upon them wisdom, guidance, strength, and courage as they mold and shape students today who will serve as leaders tomorrow. God, we continue to pray for your divine protection as we confront additional variants of COVID-19. This pandemic continues to take a toll on educators, and as they approach their winter break, give them sweet rest and renew and re-energize them for the new year. We also pray for our young people, engage their minds, protect their youthfulness, and allow them to stand strong in the face of adversity. In closing, we pray for success of today's agenda and the guidance of Governor Ivy, Dr. Mackey, and all the board members. Bless each one with insight to lead with integrity and provide solutions for the welfare of all within the Alabama educational system. We pray their hearts and minds would be centered and focused as decisions are executed, understanding that decisions today affect our tomorrow. Hear our prayer, oh Lord, amen.
Amen.
Thank you so much Pastor Lover. Please stand for pledge of allegiance to the flag. Attention, salute, and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation of the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Thornton, please call the roll.
Yes ma'am. Mrs. Bell.
Present.
Dr. Chestnut.
Present.
Governor Ivy.
Present.
Dr. McCarty.
Here.
Mrs. McRae.
Here.
Dr. Reynolds.
Here.
Dr. Richardson.
Present.
Mrs. West.
Here.
Mrs. Ziegler.
Present.
We have a quorum, Governor.
Thank you, Ms. Thornton. We will now consider a motion to approve the agenda for the December ninth, 2021 meeting of the Alabama State Board of Education. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and a discussion. All those in favor show by raised hand. All those opposed by like sign.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
We have a unanimous approval of the agenda. Approval of the minutes. We will now consider a motion to approve the minutes from the November tenth, 2021 meeting. Is there a motion?
Governor, I make the motion. We approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and a discussion.
Discussion. Governor Ivy, on several occasions, Dr. Mackey has allowed board members' names to be added to the roll when they have come in after the start of the meeting. Dr. Mackey has even asked if their votes could be added where action had already been taken, if there was no objection. According to Robert's Rule, a custom has been established. This custom has been challenged, therefore I ask that it be noted. According to Robert's Rule of Order, the 12th Edition 2:5, this custom falls to the ground, meaning that as a board, we will no longer use this practice. I would just like to note that for information.
Thank you, Dr. Richardson. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All those in favor show by raised hand. All those opposed by like sign.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
Thank you. Ms. Thornton, has anyone signed up to speak today for public hearings?
No ma'am, there are no public speakers.
Thank you. Is there any unfinished business?
There is no unfinished business.
Thank you. We'll move to new business. We'll now consider a resolution to recognize Bruton Elementary School, which is located in Bruton City School System and State Board of District One, as a 2021 Blue Ribbon School. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved, Governor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and a discussion. All those in favor show by raised hand. All those opposed show by like sign.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
Thank you. We'll now consider a resolution to recognize Orange Beach Elementary School, which is located in Baldwin County School System and State School Board District One, as a 2021 Blue Ribbon School.
So moved.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor show by raised hand. All those opposed show by like sign.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
Thank you. We'll now consider a resolution to recognize Mount Laurel Elementary School, which is located in Shelby County School System and State School Board District Three, as a 2021 Blue Ribbon School. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'm honored to make a motion for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and a discussion. All those in favor show by raised hand. All those opposed by like sign.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
Thank you. We'll now consider a resolution to recognize Hall Kent Elementary School, which is located in Homewood City School System and State School Board District Four, as a 2021 Blue Ribbon School.
So moved, Governor.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and a discussion. All those in favor show by raised hand. All those opposed show by like sign.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
Thank you. Now we'll consider a resolution to recognize MacMillan International Academy, which is located in Montgomery County School System and State School Board District Five, as a 2021 Blue Ribbon School. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and a discussion. All those in favor show by raised hand. All those opposed show by like sign.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
Thank you very much. We'll now consider a resolution to recognize Selma City School Systems Alabama Performance Excellent Program Award. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and a discussion. All those in favor show by raised hand. All those opposed by like sign.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
Thank you. Item G, we'll now consider a resolution to recognize December sixth through 12, 2021, as Computer Science Education Week in Alabama schools.
So moved.
Second, West.
We have a motion and a second and a discussion. All those in favor show by raised hand. All those opposed show by like sign.
Unanimous vote.
We'll now consider a resolution to declare the importance of local board autonomy related to certain individual health and safety decisions.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and a discussion. All those in favor show by raised hand. All those opposed show by like sign.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
We'll now consider a resolution to authorize review of an educator preparation program at Jacksonville State University. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and a discussion. All those in favor show by raised hand. All those opposed by like sign.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
Thank you. We'll now consider a motion to announce our intent to adopt new Alabama Administrative Code Rule 290-010-010-15 pertaining to the use of electronic signatures and records policy. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and a discussion. All those in favor show by raised hand. All those opposed show by like sign.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
Thank you. Item K, approve the 2021-2022 state superintendent's evaluation.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and a discussion. All those in favor show by raised hand. All those opposed by like sign.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
Item L, approval of the 2022 Alabama State Board of Education meeting and work session dates. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and a discussion. All those in favor show by raised hand. All those opposed by like sign.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
Thank you. Now we'll consider a motion to approve the employment of Ms. Stacy Royster as the program coordinator for statewide student information system implementation.
So moved. Wayne Reynolds.
Beginning at step 18, salary schedule eight, six, eight, seven, at an annual rate of 130, 984,80, effective January 1, 2022.
So moved. Wayne Reynolds, sorry I interrupted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and a discussion.
Governor.
You have a question?
No, I have you asked for discussion, and I just wanted to, I do have a question as part of the statement.
Okay, Ms. Bell.
Thank you. I talked to, and I appreciate your call, Dr. Mackey, regarding this hire, proposed hire. In our conversation, you mentioned that she would be called, and also in some email to us, you mentioned that she would be referred to as the czar of a program that we already have employed, and you mentioned that there was someone who was in the department who would be, who already is helping to implement this particular program, and if you would share a bit of our conversation, if you have my permission.
So, well, behind the scenes, I have, I think I've told all the board members, I'm referring to this as our Power School czar program, is the person who's going to work with the districts to make sure that the training is done correctly in the district. So, one of the issues that we've discovered, even we, some of our Teachers of the Year here today, we met with the Teachers of the Year a few days ago, and we had a couple of teachers on there who didn't understand, we asked specifically, are you having trouble with Power School? Tell us what some of your issues are. Some of them didn't know how to inter, they were having to double intergrade, intergrades into the student information system and then into the learning management system, which they should not have to do. And then one of the other teachers spoke up and said, no, you don't do that. You're supposed to interim once, and then you push this button. But we don't know where that button is. And so, what we've learned is that the trainer of trainers model, which we've used, in some places has worked better than others. And a big part of that is just changing turnover in people. Some people had their technology director trained, and that person left and went to another district. And so, we felt like to make sure every teacher and every principal, every school secretary, registrar has the appropriate training, we needed to dedicate a single person to oversee that. And there's not somebody now that does that. Initially, our contract with Power School says that they train all the trainers, and that ends at the end of this month. And so, if everybody were fully trained and we felt good about it, then I guess every district would have a trainer. But we don't feel good about where we are. Ms. Royster comes to us from Opelika, where she has been the district technology coordinator, and they were one of our pilot districts. So she's worked with the system as long as anybody, and feel very good about her coming in and taking over this statewide training protocol.
Governor, I would clarify, Dr. Mackey and others, that the term czar is a colloquial expression, and that in no way reflects her title. We are approving by motion her title, and you may refer to her as a colloquial person as czar, but that's not, not consistent with her official title. And I think that's what we're clarifying here. She's being employed as the statewide student information system implementation director.
Program coordinator, which is.
Program coordinator, whatever. Not czar.
Her official position under state personnel is program coordinator. Yes, sir.
Is there a motion to approve?
I so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and a discussion.
Again, Governor. As always, I do plan to abstain on this because specifically the board has given the authority to hire the state superintendent, and the state superintendent has the authority to hire who he or she would like to hire. And as a result, I know that there is an increase in the amount that would be, is, would be paid if the board approves this particular employee. But I do plan to abstain.
All those in favor of the motion show by raised hand. All those opposed show by like sign.
Vote Karis, Governor.
Abstain.
Item H, Dr. Mackey, do you have any public or legal information to share?
There's none, Governor.
Do you have a superintendent's report, Dr. Mackey?
I do, and I want to, we have a couple of things we're going to share. Now, first, let me, I want to go back and recognize a little more, some of the folks are here with us today. We have a couple of schools that we're recognizing today that are not here yet because there's another bad accident on I-65. This went south of Montgomery, and it shut down I-65, all lanes, both directions. So we have a couple of schools that are behind, and they may not even make it before we get to recognize them. And if so, we'll bring them into the work session, but we'll make sure that they get recognized. I do want to say a big thank you to our Blue Ribbon Schools. They've now been faded many times, including a trip to Washington, but we are thrilled to have five super schools to represent Alabama this year. And as soon as we get finished, I have your resolutions here, and we want to gather right in the front with your board member and take some photographs and present you with your official resolution that you can then take back and display at your school. And we really do appreciate the hard work of the teachers and principals and everybody else in those schools that make them the kind of quality that the U.S. Secretary of Education would call you out, invite you to Washington, and say, this is something we really want to showcase as an excellent school. And again, we have five this year, spread out across the state. Also, Dr. Avus Williams is with us from Selma. Selma was one of only two institutions to be recognized with this special award. The other one was a healthcare institute. So they're the only education group that got the award for excellence, and basically, I won't go into it too much, but organizational excellence, working to organize themselves in a way that would support student learning. And so, Dr. Williams, thank you for joining us today. And same, if you'll stay afterward, we definitely want to get your resolution to you and have some photographs taken. So, the school that, I know that some of the schools are with us. I don't think that Bruton Elementary has made it yet, though. Oh, they have made it. Okay, great. Oh, now I see. Okay, good. So we have, I think all of our Blue Ribbon Schools are now here with us. And again, we will do pictures in just a few minutes, but we have from Bruton, Principal Barry Woods and Superintendent Dr. Kenneth Varner, and a team of other folks. Would you please stand, all the Bruton folks? The whole line. From Hall Kent Elementary School in Homewood, I show that we have Principal Kiana Coleman, and I think, there she is, very bad. Rick Patrick Chapel, longtime Homewood guy, too. MacMillan International Academy here in Montgomery, we have Principal Faith Gochet. And I see also we have two board members. And I know Dr. Moore was here with us early, but told us she would be in and out, she had, somewhere else she had to be, so she was unable to stay for our pictures. Mount Laurel Elementary School in Shelby County, we have Principal Salita Carmichael and Assistant Principal Tina Neighbors with us today. And Orange Beach Elementary School, we have Shelley Ford and Nicole Bryant, and Principal, yeah, go ahead. Principal Law was not able to join us today, but wanted to make sure she got some folks up here. So thank you all for joining us today. We usually also, when we have someone from the universities here with us, you approved a approval of beginning a review to add an elementary master's pro, or an elementary AA program at Jacksonville State. And Andrea Rains is here with us from Jacksonville State. I've lost her, right here in the back. Thank you for joining us today. So now we're going to show you a brief video, but I'm going to bring Dr. Deli Chambers up to the podium. This is Inclusive Schools Week. You have already approved that resolution, but by inclusive schools, we want you to see this great video that really shows what we mean by inclusive schools, and making sure that we have high-quality educational opportunities for all children, no matter their ability or disability. And so, Dr. Chambers has put together this wonderful video, and we want to get it out to the schools, so we wanted, but we wanted you to see it first. So, Dr. Chambers, if you want to share anything you want to say before we begin the video.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Dr. Mackey. Good morning, Governor and board members. I would like to thank the board for adopting the resolution in support of Inclusive Schools Week. Your actions and your words over the last couple of years have shown that you support special education teachers, staff that are in the classrooms, and that you care about our children. And so I want to say thank you to you for that. Dr. Mackey invited us to bring a video to you today, and Shane Gillis is over there. He actually was instrumental in helping put this together. He is our video person extraordinaire. He went to four school districts, nine schools, in two days, and then he came back and he told me he needed three weeks to put it together, but really he only had three days. So, we, I could have come up here and told you about the wonderful things that are going on in the schools, and how they've continued to teach and learn and be actively involved, but I'd rather show you. So here's the video. Inclusive Schools Week is celebrated annually, the first week in December, by families, schools, and organizations around the world. The week highlights and celebrates the progress that schools have made in implementing inclusive practices to ensure a quality education for an increasingly diverse student population. The week provides an important opportunity for educators, students, and parents to discuss what else needs to be done in order to ensure that schools continue to improve their ability to successfully educate all children. It is a time to acknowledge the hard work and commitment of teachers, administrators, students, and parents in making schools more inclusive, and thereby significantly contributing to the development of a more inclusive society. Inclusive Schools Week is celebrated by thousands of school districts in every state in the U.S. and internationally. In addition, more than 50 educational and cultural associations and media outlets support the week. The Alabama State Department of Education is excited to acknowledge the great things that are going on in many, many Alabama schools by showcasing activities in several public school districts. Alabama schools have made progress implementing inclusive practices to ensure a quality education for an increasingly diverse student population. Inclusive learning is a mindset that incorporates teaching students the importance of learning with and working with people who may think and act differently from themselves. Inclusive learning greatly affects student engagement and student participation. Students are not limited in their assumptions about each other, about disabilities, or perceived weaknesses. Interaction between students, teachers, parents, and administrators promotes an inclusive environment that builds relationships and understanding. The result is high expectations, increased academic achievement, and personal satisfaction. We are stronger together when we embrace every child, every chance, every day. Thank you.
Certainly appreciate Dr. Chambers and all of our teachers out there, and especially our special needs teachers, who work so hard each and every day, and big celebration this week for inclusive schools. Now, I have two other folks that are, I think they may all be here now, that we want to bring down. So Jessica Bolin, many of you may know Ms. Bolin, come on down, and I'm going to ask you, you can bring anybody down with you if you want to, and Dr. Hall to come down to the podium. So a couple of weeks ago, we made a crazy day trip, left Montgomery early in the morning to drive down to Chickasaw, and then from Chickasaw directly to Auburn, nonstop, because we had two teachers to recognize. So Ms. Bolin was our last teacher of the day, but we're going to start with her. Our Chickasaw folks were also caught up in traffic, but they've sent me a message that they are now parking, so.
They are here.
They're here and on their way. Okay. So these two, Ms. Bolin is a construction technology teacher at Auburn High School, and she won a $50,000 prize in a national contest with Harbor Freight. And I think there were only six winners or so in the country, I don't know, I might get the number wrong. There were very few winners. We had two in Alabama, and Ms. Bolin was one of them. And we're going to let you tell, let her tell you a little bit about her program, but I've also, she does great work, I'm going to brag on her a little bit, and Ms. West knows better than I, the whole, so I won't say too much, but I want to say that they build tiny houses. We wanted to see if they could bring a tiny house here today, but they sailed, and so that they don't have one right now. So we may bring her back sometime and see if we can bring a house over here from Auburn. But Ms. Bolin, thank you for the work you do for our children.
Thank you, Dr. Mackey. Good morning. Thank you for having me, board members, and thank you for having me, Governor Ivy. So my name is Jessica Bolin. I was called by our director, Ms. Laura Bailey, at that time, and she invited me to Auburn High School to start the building construction program. And I didn't really know what I was getting into, but five years later, I am very excited to be there and very fortunate for the opportunity that was presented. Throughout my program, students have the opportunity to earn their career readiness indicator, NCCER. And what NCCER is, is basically a nonprofit based out of Florida, and it's comprised of industry professionals, so they actually create the curriculum that I teach throughout my four courses. And I guess from the beginning to the end, students are introduced to the basic concepts of construction, so how to read a tape measure, how to use tools, the importance of OSHA, and what role they play in the industry, how to read construction drawings and specs. And then it progresses all the way through to how to install plumbing fixtures, how to pull wire, how to wire up a three-way switch, and so on. So from start to finish, students are kind of introduced to every aspect of a construction project. I graduated from Auburn University in 2013 with a Bachelor of Science in Building Construction, and then I went on to work in the industrial sector of the industry with a contractor in Decatur, Alabama. Some of my background experience is in residential. I also did some commercial and healthcare projects throughout my time in college and in the industry following college. I serve on the board with Habitat for Humanity, our local chapter, and I am involved in the National Association for Home Builders, Professional Women in Building, and I also serve as a CTE mentor throughout, for the state of Alabama. So that's just a little background of myself and the program.
And she does a great job. Magnificent work, lots of students involved, and so we thank you very much. And while you're there, so Mr. Coates, Brian Coates, is the teacher at Chickasaw. They are here somewhere. I know we have to move on, but so what I would like to do is bring him into the board work session, because he also has a project to bring with him. I don't know if Ms. Bolin can stay, Dr. Hall?
She had a little bit more, but the clicker stopped working.
Well, so I want to, I was going to say, I wish she would come into the work session with us, so we can have a little Q and A with her, if she's, if she's able to stay, so maybe we could. Oh, she's got, she's got it going.
It's working now. Thank you so much. I'm so sorry. Okay, so, a couple of weeks ago, I was surprised with the award for the Harbor Freight Tools for School Teaching, Prize for Teaching Excellence, and with that came a $50,000 grant. Throughout my grant application, I wrote about our community partnerships. There are several, but one of the ones that I wanted to highlight was the Habitat for Humanity one, because they have been an integral part of our program. Throughout this partnership, we have been, I guess, we have benefited greatly. Throughout this partnership, we have been, I guess, we have benefited greatly through, across multiple aspects. So, one of them being, one of our students is currently employed with them. It's a paid position, and he is gaining both office and field experience, working as an assistant project manager. That's through our Work-Based Learning Program. So, he's also earning class credit for that. And then, through that employment position, he's also experiencing work with Auburn University's Building Science Program. So, it's kind of a seamless transition from high school to the workplace and to a post-secondary degree program. So, he's really enjoying that. We provide sheds for the Habitat for Humanity houses, the families that we're building the houses for, because one of the things that they are faced with is that, yes, they have a house by the end of the project, but they don't have anywhere to store their lawnmowers and, you know, their tools for outside. So, it gives them that extra storage space, and so, we're able to build that without having to do a field trip every single day. And students are learning the standards for the framing components of a structure, and then also the finishing. So, that's been fun, and Habitat's been a huge support for our program. So, we're very fortunate for that partnership. And then, like Dr. Mackey explained, we do build, we built a tiny house, and then by the end of it, when COVID hit, prices, you know, I'm sure we all are aware that the prices for construction materials skyrocketed. So, we kind of put that on hold until they started to come down, and we hope to start our second one here in the near future. But it was a 218-square-foot tiny house with a loft, and in that project, students learned every aspect of a construction project, with the exception of site prep, because it was built on a utility trailer that was specialty manufactured through an Alabama fabrication company. So, we sold it for $30,000, and it's currently staged at Lake Harden, which is right up the road from us. And the buyer was a great guy. He was very excited about it, and he's constantly showing people who want to see it. So, he's been a huge support for our program. And then, the next slide is a video. It was the ribbon cutting of the tiny house. Through all of the things that I have learned about design and construction, I have learned far more about creativity, commitment, hard work, long hours, work ethic, passion, and the power of a group of people. I stand before you today with all the credit, Jessica Bowlen, to her husband, to her support system, and to these amazing young people who are building Alabama's first tiny house in a public school system. We tell the- So, that was it. It was a little bit long originally, but just wanted to highlight kind of the project, give you a quick fly-through of what it looked like. But it was a very fun project, and it wouldn't have been possible without our partnerships in the community as well as at the state level. So, thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
Good things happening. I'm going to ask Mr. Coates to work his way down. She also has her director here with us today, Ms. Bowlen's director. We stole a director from Auburn, and I'm glad they can't have Ms. Bailey back, but thank you for joining us today, too. Mr. Coates, if you'll work your way down. Looks like you've got some folks with you today, too. So, we, I mentioned, we started our morning at Chickasaw. I was late to the program. It just, this is, the circle being closed, because I actually walked into the gym, and Ms. Ziegler was texting with me, like, they're moving on, they're moving on, they're getting ready to adjourn. And I came in right before the end of the program and got to say a few words, and then stay around and go visit his facility also. And then, we went from there directly to Auburn. So, we also got, we got tied up on I-65 going south that day, and I know you got tied up today going north.
We did.
Hope you've had a chance to at least take a deep breath and tell us a little bit about the program, and I know you've brought some, some folks with you, too.
Yes. Well, I tell you, it is an extreme honor for us to be here today. You know, being part of the, recognized by Harbor Freight was just tremendous. It's really, it's about the kids and what the kids are able to do. And what I'm going to do is, I'm actually going to invite a couple of my students up to tell you about the projects that we have going on at Chickasaw High School. So, most schools are doing simulated workplace in the classroom, but here at Chickasaw, we are creating up a real workplace. It's called Life Changer Manufacturing. So, Ben?
Oh, there's the clicker. Hi, my name is Ben. I'm a junior at Chickasaw High School. That's how I just pressed it for them.
Yeah, that's your clicker.
Okay. There we go. Hi, my name is Ben. I'm a junior at Chickasaw High School, and I'm about to tell you about some of the projects we have. Here at Chickasaw High School, we give our students unique opportunities to change the world and travel across the world. We have two projects going around, the prosthetic leg project and the container classroom project. These projects will give national and international attention to our city, our school, and our And at Chickasaw High School, as you said, there, we have a business going on, a nonprofit. So, we make inexpensive prosthetic legs and such that we even went to a business expo this year. So, we met a bunch of business partners, and one of those business partners is Dr. Albert Allen Lourdes-Crofton. He's the one that chooses our sites for our prosthetic legs and is going to choose a site for the container classroom. Another one of our supporters is Paul Tuttle Jr. from the American Chopper TV series, who donates, donates one of the prosthetic parts to the leg. And another one is former Miss Columbia Daniela Alvarez, who wants to shine a light on the prosthetic leg community and how expensive the prosthetic legs are, which is what I'm about to ask you. How much do you think a prosthetic leg will cost? A prosthetic leg costs around $30,000 to $60,000, and our leg only costs $300, which is a 99% decrease in price. And as everyone here says, we had a class research showing that 80% of all amputees live in these developing countries. That's why we're going to either in El Salvador or Honduras, and we're trying to give them life. Even if you're a normal person, you're lucky to make $5 per day. So, imagine you just lose a leg. You become a shadow in your community, you become a beggar. You have nobody, nothing in your life. You feel like you're worthless since you can't support your family, so the suicide rates increase. And as you can see, these are our students working on the legs, and that's our 3D printer. And we can change the leg based on how tall the person is. It's adjustable for all sizes. There we go. And then, October 21, 21, we had the opportunity to fit amputees in Mexico in El Salvador. And as you can see, that's a man walking on one of our legs, right there. And then, one of our mottos is we give people a life of fulfilled normalcy. And the person you see right there is the person that was struggling to walk on that leg. And you can see he's full of confidence, full of life, and full of normalcy. And I'm going to bring it to our amazing Samuel Laurent.
Hi, my name's Samuel Laurent. I am a senior at Chickasaw High School, and I am a part of the team member. Over the past two years, COVID has affected our education system in a huge way. In the, in the United States, we have options to use our devices to continue on with our education. In many countries, they can't do that, because they don't have educate, I mean, they don't have devices. And some communities don't have access to electricity or access to the internet. All right. So, we are constructing a solar-powered computer lab from a shipping container. And we're going to give it to a community that has never had electricity before. These are some of our team members, putting our walls up for their container classroom. Imagine a child entering into an air-conditioning room for the first time in their lives, the excitement and wonders of exploring the worldwide web.
One of, uh, oh, right there. One of Chickas, the Chickasaw motto is repairing our students for the day after graduation. One of the ways that this club gives us a preparation is every day we stay after school, we get service hours. So, five students last year got the Presidential Volunteer Service Award, which is the most prestigious award you can get by the president. There's only four here, and every single one is here. And now, I want to present the leg by our vice president. You're going to present the leg? You want to come up, or do we want a student?
Hold on just for a minute. Oh, you got the leg?
Oh, we got the leg right here.
All right, too.
We got the leg right here.
Bring it up here.
All right.
Just, everybody can't come up, but if she can come up, that'd be great. And now, you stand right here, so we can get a picture with you and me and Governor Ivey, if you will, and then we'll get one with everybody in a few minutes. Thank you very much, and they've all signed this, so.
You want to, Ms. Coates?
Well, I'd personally like to thank you for giving both myself and my students the opportunity to come in and speak to you today.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
We, we would like, if you might to get all of them in there, but after, after we're about to conclude and have to adjourn, but if y'all can stay a few more minutes, you and Ms. Bowlen, too, could come in and just have a little Q and A with the board at the start of our work session. We'd love that. I know they'd like to meet your students. We want to do some pictures. Governor, a year ago, this meeting was the, maybe the lowest point I can ever remember in public education. We actually had a virtual meeting, and I was at home, virtual, because I was in quarantine. The governor was in her office, and things were sad. I am glad to conclude my superintendent's report today with telling you that brighter times are here, and the future is even brighter because of young people and teachers like this. Thanks.
Superintendent Massey, Governor, I'd like to make one comment. Last month at our work session, we had the Workforce Council present to us a very detailed report and expectations that they should, had that we, as a board, should pursue. If there's ever an exemplary example of what we, as a state board and the state public education program are doing, this Chickasaw program is that. And I hope that we can convey and give these videos to the representatives of the Workforce Council to reinforce our commitment and our assurance to them that we're doing what they're asking us to do.
Concludes the report, Governor.
All right, item J. The next elementary and secondary education meeting of the Alabama State Board of Education will be held on Thursday, January 13, 2022, at 10:00 a.m. in the Gordon Person's Building. On the term, the work session will immediately follow the board meeting in Room P-103 in the Gordon Person's Building. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, show by raised hand. All those opposed, show by like sign.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
Thank you. We are now adjourned.